We're going to start the meeting with a pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. The mayor is out of town at a conference, so I will be your host this evening. Can I get approval of the village board meeting minutes from May 2nd, 2024?
Most likely.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Citizens' comments. If there's anyone who'd like to come and address the board, you may do so. If you're a resident, please give us your name and address. If you're here representing an organization, you can give your name and the organization that you're representing, and we would like to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes.
Your name and street.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, street address.
Yes, it does.
Don't have to give your exact house number.
I'm here supporting you.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to address the board? Oh, Matt, you're on the agenda if you want to.
I know. I also had some comments too.
You have some? Okay. Perfect.
That hot on behalf of the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, board. Just wanted to keep the community abreast of some events going on with the Chamber of Commerce coming up. Wednesday, June 5th, we're doing a coffee talk meeting at Weaver, Manco, so, Brighton, Weaver, Manco, so, Brighton Law Firm. Wednesday, June 12th, we'll be hosting our monthly luncheon at the Canal Side Cafe and Bistro. If anybody would like to register for that, you can do so by June 4th. You can email the baldensvillechamber@gmail.com to do so. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting on Saturday, June 15th, for the new location of Fashion Restaurant 911. Thursday, June 20th, 4:30 to 6:30, Haran Companies on East Genesee Street. We'll be doing a grand opening and ribbon cutting at 5:30 for that. And on Thursday, June 27th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we will be hosting a Chamber after hours at Ascent Malons. Thank you.
If you want to do your other piece now.
Okay.
So you don't have to stand up and introduce yourself again.
Okay. Thank you.
It's all at the same time.
So also here on behalf of the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce, to request official approval, I suppose, for the 2024 Taste of Beville. Looking to host that on Papermill Island on Saturday, September 21st. The event will run from noon to 10:00 p.m. Set up arrival around 9:00 a.m. Finish the event, tear it down around 11:00 p.m. The paperwork and insurance is already in order with Jody. So along with that, I'd just like to request that the waiver of open container, and if we could waive half of the park fee as we did last year, that would be greatly appreciated as well.
Okay. And the open container you're looking for from the noon to 10 hours?
Correct. We actually stopped, not sure, I think we stopped serving it.
But people will still have it.
Yeah, but they'll still have the container, correct. Yeah, so noon to 10, it would be appropriate, yes.
All right. So we'll add that to our agenda under new business C, so we can get that taken care of later.
Any questions?
Yeah, anybody have any questions for Matt?
Pretty standard. What we hope is to, this is the fifth year, so we'd like to celebrate that with some fireworks. I'll be working on the appropriate approvals for that as well, as long as we can get funding.
And you'll need to know about fireworks, right?
Myself and Tim are working on through that. I think maybe Tim through codes, I think there's a section of the law.
Okay.
Where there's him to maybe issue the permit and take a look at it, but we're working quietly on that.
Okay.
So we've got an application now that came to me, and I walked it over and talked to Tim today on that this evening, so definitely.
Perfect.
Well, once officially approved, we'll coordinate the usual security and shifts before the event.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other citizens wishing to make a comment that isn't already on the, under special presentations? You look like you're about to get up.
Kevin from town Lysander, town supervisor. I'd just like to say, you know, tonight in our meeting, we discussed that Ruth will be leaving Canton Woods, she'll be retiring. Good luck. We wish you the best. Councilor Jurassic said something, and it made a reference, you know, watch the, watch our PACB meeting when it gets up. We appreciate your years of service. Thank you for all you've done. You've done an excellent service at Canton Woods. You've brought it up to an excellent level. Councilor Jurassic cannot say enough of the interactions he's had with you, and you'll be deeply missed. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Anybody else, or I'll go to our special presentations. All right, we have a couple of representatives from the Church on Papermill Island group.
Rashia, pull this in.
Hey, yeah, that's where Kevin's at. I'm sorry. I didn't even wear my platform shoes.
I'm Julia Blavin, and my husband and I live up on Dexter Drive.
I'm Pam out of Bianco, and I live just outside the village. And we're one house on it. We're here to ask permission for our ninth year of Church on the Island to have the usage of Papermill Island. We've submitted the letter requesting that, and we're just here to formally ask for permission for that.
Do you want to tell the public a little bit about what the church is?
Sure. Church on the Island is an inclusive and formal, non-denominational, seasonal, half-hour of worship at Papermill Island. We have a rotation of clergy, local clergy, delivering uplifting messages. We meet from 8:00 to 8:30 on Sundays, starting Father's Day, June 16th, through Labor Day, September 1st, well, September, Labor Day weekend. We set up usually around 7:00 a.m. and finish by 9:00 a.m. People can walk, they can drive, they can ride their bike, or come by boat. For this open-air service, it really is a part of summer in Beville. It's really about it. Any questions for us?
Jody, is there any paperwork or anything that we need?
No.
We're all set?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And then it looks like we have some rotarians here about the Senate of the River Days.
Two of the shortest rotarians.
Absolutely. Nicole McManus, I live on Smokey Hollow Road.
And I'm Jenny Dome. I live, not in the village, I live up on Dexter.
So we are here, Seneca River Days is coming up, June 7th and 8th, and to be held on Papermill Island. We're here to ask for a waiver for the open container, and that would be for Friday, the 7th, 4:30 to 10 are the hours that we're having for Friday. And then also a reduction in the usage of the island for the weekend.
To $500.
Right.
All right. We'll put it under new business as well. Anybody have any questions?
Do you need the waiver for Saturday too, for the open container?
They only have it Friday.
Yeah, we're only having, yeah, it would only be on Friday.
And would anybody like to buy a duck ticket?
We have tons of tickets, please.
You'll get our money.
And of course, please attend.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, last call for any citizens' comments before we move on. All right, trustees' comments. I'll start with you, Donna.
I have nothing to add.
All right. Nate?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, I've been on the board for a little over two years, and one thing that became abundantly clear is that this board does not operate without the department heads, and one in particular, and, you know, like what Kevin said, we absolutely commend your service. We love you, and we wish you well. Thank you. Stick to the agenda.
Ruth? Okay. Like to mirror that as well, and I've enjoyed working with you on the board over there, and you've done a fabulous job, and we've had a lot of fun, I think, so. And then also, I'd like to announce there's an organizational meeting on Monday, the 20th, for the visitor's center at the library at 6:00. And then also, our Memorial Day Parade is coming up on Thursday, May 30th, and that commences at 5:45 p.m. That's about it.
All right. I'm going to skip myself right now, but I'm going to ask Jody. I lost the proclamation that I'm supposed to read. So I'll let Mike go, and then we'll come back.
It's a shame you're leaving, because I only have a couple more years until I would be over there at the Senior Center and bother to be able to go to the other council.
Absolutely.
Just to echo that, everybody's sentiment, it's been great having you. It's been flawless. We've never had any issues. It's been seamless, and we'll miss you. We know where you live, though, so.
Just like I do.
We can still hook you back in.
Eric?
I'll stick to the agenda tonight.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a couple of things I wanted to mention. I had the fun of doing my trainings for the workplace violence and the harassment and discrimination in the workplace just this week. I made sure I got mine done. Reminder to all the board members to do your trainings if you have not, and reminder to the department heads to make sure that your staff has completed it as well, so you don't get Jody coming knocking on your door. And I've been talking with Jody about it. I know the, our village policies are currently undergoing some reviews, so Jody, I would just ask that when those are done, if you could distribute a copy of them to the board members. The other thing I wanted to mention is, in our DPW meeting today, we unfortunately heard about a couple of instances of vandalism throughout the village at summertime, so the kids are out there again doing things they probably shouldn't be doing, so just a reminder that if you see something, say something, or let the village know, so that we can hopefully deter any future vandalism from happening, because we don't need that in our community. And then it's not officially on the agenda, so should I just read the proclamation now during my comments? So again, we've all mentioned that Ruth is retiring at the end of the month, so the mayor has written a proclamation that I get the pleasure of reading on his behalf in his absence. So I'm going to read that, and then I will ask the board to approve the proclamation. So, "Whereas we wish to express our appreciation to Ruth Troy and to honor her for her distinguished 15-year career with the Canton Woods Senior Center, serving the senior citizens of our community. And whereas Ruth began her career as the Senior Center Coordinator at Canton Woods on March 23rd, 2009, she accepted the unique challenge of directing operations of the Senior Center, a facility owned and operated jointly through an agreement between the Village of Baldensville and the towns of Vamuren and Lysander. This unique collaboration has provided Ruth with no shortage of bosses whom she has done, whom she has done with great tact and diplomacy." Not sure if that makes sense, but I'll get that fixed. "Whereas Ruth was, was given a fixed budget with which to operate Canton Woods and the challenge of raising any additional funds needed to supplement the base provided. In response, Ruth spearheaded the development of programs designed to enhance awareness while generating revenue, including the Walk for the Woods. She worked cooperatively with the Canton Woods Board of Directors to meet this challenge. And whereas Ruth has coordinated a wide variety of programs which serve not only the senior audience, but the community as a whole, examples of such programs include the annual car show, the Christmas tree lighting, musical performances, and several fitness-themed programs. Additionally, Ruth has coordinated clinics for vaccinations, the mobile mammogram unit, tax preparations, and falls prevention. Whereas Ruth has secured funding from grants to assist in improving Canton Woods, most recently the paved walking trail, the folding divider wall, and the roof replacement project, she even selected the new shingles to go on the roof. Whereas Ruth has provided an invaluable resource coordinating efforts with the Meals on Wheels program housed at Canton Woods, she has even been a liaison between the Baldensville Water Department, the seniors facilitating the installation, and seniors facilitating the installation of new water meters in their homes. Ruth has assisted seniors in life's challenges while providing a safe, comfortable setting for essential and enjoyable social interaction. And whereas Ruth has a family with whom she desires to spend more time, and that Ruth plans to travel to faraway places, including the Emerald Isle of Ireland. Whereas Ruth has been a valued member of our team and has achieved a milestone signifying the peak of a rewarding career and the beginning of a new chapter in life, now therefore, I, Bruce W. Stevens, Mayor of Baldensville, upon the occasion of her retirement, do hereby proclaim May 31st, 2024 as Ruth Troy Day in Baldensville, and encourage..." And encourage all citizens to express their congratulations and gratitude for her service and dedication to this community."
Thank you. Thank you very kindly, Ruth, and I very appreciate it.
So when the mayor gets back, if we allow it, we'll let him sign it, and you can get it done here. I know we're celebrating you again on the 31st.
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to put that on new business as, as new business item E. I don't have any other comments, so we will move on to the department heads.
I just want to second everybody's comments about Ruth. You've been wonderful to work with, and I would also add that you're going to be a very, very tough act to follow. But I, it just has been a breeze getting through a lot of the little things that we've gone through for the last several years, and you made it a lot easier. On Monday, I met with the ZBA. They have been reviewing, as I think I've mentioned before, because they don't have much to do right now, there have not been a lot of applications, excuse me, for variances before the zoning board, but they have noticed in the past that some of the provisions of our zoning code maybe create some of the issues that come before them. They have reviewed the portion of the code that they feel needs some amendment, the sign code. So they've come up with, right now we've got about 11, 12 things that we're finalizing, and they ultimately want to propose to this board a change to the sign code to make things a little easier and make the code a little, little better to work with. So I just want to let you know that that would be coming, and I don't know if Jim Zuccolotto is going to be presenting that, or whether he just wants me to do it, but anyway, they'll be, at the end of our, at the, at our next meeting, which will be in June, we'll finalize everything, and I should be able to get that to you. But they, they've decided they would like to kind of act as the zoning committee, because they've got nothing else to do, and they've got representatives who deal with the planning board, the ARB, and of course, the zoning board, so they kind of see how some of the zoning code provisions interact with, with the applications that come in. So they want to go ahead and move on some other things, including they also brought up the issue of abandoned homes and how we should deal with those. So they're, they're getting a lot done along those lines, and we'll work with the code officer as well. So other than that, I have nothing but the agenda.
Jody?
I just want to say, Ruth, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I will miss our 8:00 a.m. personnel calls in the morning.
Thank you, Jody.
Mark?
I want to echo everybody's comments about Ruth. She's been great to work with. She does a great job of the budget, and she's always first, because her fiscal year is different than ours, so she has to be done sooner. And that, I appreciate that a ton. You've included me with your board, which is great, and you're just generally great to work with. So I will definitely miss you, and I'll miss our, our 9:00 o'clock calls. And the other thing is, there's an agenda item for a bond, approval of a bond tonight, statutory installment bond. We can talk about that, and I'm hoping to question this when we get to that agenda item.
Thank you.
That's it.
Ruth? You have anything to say?
We do have our craft sale coming up on June 7th. It's a Friday from 10:00 to 3:00, so come on and watch that. And also, the Canton Woods Board is doing their golf tournament, so if you're a golfer, that's June 24th. The information's on the village website and the other municipal websites, and also available at the center, so come out and support us that way. And then I would just like to say thank you all for your very kind comments, and also the support this board has always shown for the Senior Center and for myself. Personally, I appreciate that. And I would like to also say that for the folks in the community, the Village of Baldensville is served by very dedicated professionals, and it has been my pleasure to be a part of people that are collaborative and supportive and work together, and I will miss that opportunity. But thank you all for the kind words, I do appreciate it.
Chuck?
The Highway Department here recently, they've been working on some of the catch bases in the winter, getting some of that strained up. Tomorrow, we hope to get all the, or most all the hanging baskets up, flowers, all the parks are open. The water department, we're finishing up on the project over there, that's just been fantastic, the electrical project over there, and we have a little more work to do. Things are looking very well over there. And now to my friend Ruth. I won't miss your phone calls. Ruth always starts off with a phone call, I wish, "I'm sorry to bother you," I says, "You are not," and she says, "I know." But I don't think a lot of people really realize what goes on over there, and we see it because we're over there doing maintenance. And we've had even trouble getting into people's houses, elderly people getting in their houses and not knowing if they're home, and water breaks and stuff, and I'll call over there, and she'll know who they are, who the kids are, you know, and help us with that. We had a dear friend of mine, and she, she asked me to talk to her once, and they're having problems with a neighbor, and the neighbor was picking on her, and I went over and talked to her, Ruth knew the daughter, and the, the phone numbers, and there's so much that goes on over there, from one day she was like, "We need more TVs over here." I says, "What do you mean? They got like four, five of those TVs on the wall for Wii bowling." Well, there's more people. And it's a big event over there, and Ruth, you've been great to work with. I don't think anybody knows what you go through over there every day, and I will definitely miss you, and I'm glad I'm retiring behind you. But you've, you've been, and you're very dear to those people, and those people love you over there. And I recently had a talk with one of them that was like your right-hand person for years, and now he's older, and, and his wife said to me, she goes, "Ruth is very good to my husband, and keeps an eye on him." And I says, "Well, he was always really good to her too, but you care, and you made a big difference over there, and you will be missed."
Well, thank you.
So, but I won't miss the phone calls.
Yeah.
That's right.
Thank you. I will begin with comments regarding my colleague Ruth, and what comes to mind is one word, is advocacy. There's no bigger advocate for the seniors in the Baldensville community than Ruth. She has been nothing but a stand-up person who comes to every event advocating for what is going on at the, at the center, what is available for the seniors of our community, no matter if they utilize that center or not, and encouraging people to be active in their older years. And I think the legacy that you leave behind is that of advocacy, and one of inclusion, and one of empowerment to the people as they age, and that's quite a legacy, and you should be very proud and walk out with your head held high for, for what you've accomplished. So congratulations for, for your time, and the village and the Baldensville community is better off for you having worked here for the last 15 years.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ruth.
Thank you.
I would remind everyone here and in our board that this is National Police Week. We're down in Washington, D.C., there are events taking place all week at the Law Enforcement Officers Memorial to commemorate those officers that have given their all in the line of duty. This year so far, 58 individuals across our country have lost their lives in the line of duty, as we all know, including two right here in this county. The danger is real, it's local, and it's here. I do appreciate the board and the support that we've always had with our organization from the community. I think that speaks to our community service mindset that we've had for the last 52 years, since 1972. And today, Worth Wealth Planning, a couple doors down from, from here, dropped off pizzas for lunch today in honor of Law Enforcement Police Week, so we certainly appreciate them and, and their work for that. And other, other people brought things in anonymously, in some cases, during our tragic events in, in April, and we certainly appreciate the support that we have, not only from this board, but, but the citizens throughout the community. We did receive, last, last board meeting, I believe the mayor was, brought up license plate readers, and I had written a grant about 18 months ago, asking for the license plate readers, and then on Monday, we got the award. Mark thought, geez, how might I get those LPRs so fast? I wish I could lay credit to that, but I can't. But we're getting about $91,000 to upgrade that capability, and it really provides, increases our level of public safety, because we'll, we'll get alerts if vehicle registrations are suspended, or individuals have warrants, and you keep in mind, if, if people have vehicle registrations that are suspended, oftentimes that's because they haven't paid child support, or they haven't paid car insurance, so they're operating and putting everyone else at risk, creating hazards for the rest of us, causing increases for our own insurance. So I would repeat our mantra that traffic safety is part of public safety, to ensure that this village remains safe for pedestrians and people that utilize the roadways, which we all know is increasing on a daily basis, and I don't think there's an end in sight with the, with the development that's going on in, in our community. So I'm looking forward, I'll work with Mark on, on that, to ensure that we, we spend that money appropriately. And then I'm working now with our, with Bob Baldwin on our SRO contract. I had him take a look at that, and I'll work on the numbers and get that to the school district. I went with the superintendent a couple days ago earlier this week at the Chamber of Commerce Coffee Talk, which was held up at the Transportation Center for the school. We talked about that and some other issues, and we'll be, we'll be getting that to both boards for you to review and, and approval. So unless there's questions, I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Any calls, have you had to the Senior Center in the last 15 years?
Um, Ruth, Ruth and I have had some conversations. I'm not going to say I'm going to miss them, but I have no doubt that whoever tries to fill her, her large shoes will, will probably end up with a, with a call or two, because inevitably there'll be an issue that requires us to, us to talk some things out. But it's been, it's been a great partnership. Ruth has been a great partner to every department head here, and always calls for advice or counsel, and we've bounced ideas off each other, and that I will certainly miss.
Thanks, Chief.
Certainly.
Looks like we don't have any pending business, so we'll move on to new business. Can I get a motion to appoint the following as a seasonal laborer in the Parks Department with the effective date of May 20th, 2024? Matt Santmeyer at a salary of $17.87 per hour.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion on that.
Yep.
Yep.
So, how many hours is this going to be, Chuck?
I've got to talk to him and see what he can do. I think it's set up for 20 hours a week, but I'm not sure he's going to be able to put down the hours in.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows, we had somebody else appointed, and then this week she says, I don't want to do it. So we're thrilled to be able to get hold of him, I can meet with him next week and just see how many hours he can work.
If we just add a max of 20 hours for a week, does that work for you?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the statutory installment bond resolution dated 5/16/2024, authorizing a bond anticipation note for the bucket truck and a future statutory installment bond to finance this ban and the coming plow truck?
Mayor, before you do that, I would note that in discussing this with the treasurer, the motion that's, or the resolution that's on for tonight is to authorize the statutory installment bond.
Okay.
Because there's a 20-day period within which objections can be raised to this resolution. I have suggested that the bond anticipation note be discussed at the next meeting, so that this motion should be to approve the statutory installment bond for acquiring the bucket truck and the Cummings plow truck.
Okay.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, did I get a motion yet?
I'll do it.
Okay. Is that good? Second? Any further discussion?
Mark, could you just give a little explanation as far as what's going to be happening?
Yeah, two vehicles. Bucket truck, which we already have, we already bought, we paid for it out of our reserves, or just our general funds, with the caveat that we would pay them back by bonding when we could, we'd get a bond together. So we're in that process now with a bond anticipation note for that amount, which was $145,622, I think, or something. So we get the ban in the next month, you'll approve it at the next meeting, we'll get that, that's resalve back, we'll pay ourselves back, we'll carry that until this other truck that we ordered in January of '23 comes in. That could be in the fall, it could be in the winter, it could be in the spring. It's, it's, they're really, they're building it now, and I think Chuck doesn't really have an idea, they haven't given him an idea, so.
The cap's not even in yet, so it's...
Yeah. So when that comes, we will basically refinance the bucket truck into a statutory installment bond that includes the plow truck also, and that amount would be $357,000 there that's on the resolution that you were given. That's kind of it. We, the ban, we don't have to pay anything on the ban, we have to pay the accrued interest on the ban, and we pay it off. We don't have to make a principal payment, we probably will, depending on how the budget looks, what point we're at in the budget. Be nice to reduce that number some, but we won't incur any more debt than the $357,000 unless we come to you and say there's been some kind of problem with the truck coming, and it's morbid. The one that we got last year, or the one that we got earlier this year, cost exactly what they said it was going to a year before. So it's, we anticipate the same thing's going to happen.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Next, can I get a motion for the Taste of Baldensville, for the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce, waiver of their open container law, our open container law, from noon to 10:00 PM on September 21st, and a reduction in the fee to $500 for use of the island for the day.
Motion.
Second? All those, any discussion? I just wore my volunteer t-shirt the other day when I was out doing some yard work.
One of the only shirts that fits me anymore.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Next, can I get a motion for Seneca River Days on behalf of the Rotary Club for a waiver of their open container, our open container law, from 4:30 to 10:00 PM, I broke 10:00 AM down, that would be too long, 4:30 to 10:00 PM on June 7th, and a reduction of the fees for the Paper Mill Island to $500 as well.
I'll move that.
Second?
Chief, may I?
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation declaring May 31st, 2024 to be Ruth Troy Day in the Village of Baldensville?
Move to. I can.
You can make that motion too, right?
Yeah. That's good.
Let somebody else do it. I got to read it.
Do we have a discussion?
Do you have a discussion? Yeah.
Can't retire. Can I have a copy of the husband?
All those in favor? Opposed?
About the church.
Do we need a motion for the church to give them the use of the island? For good measure? Thank you.
Motion.
All right, well, let me, let me figure out what it should be first. So can I get a motion for, to allow the collaboration of churches in the Baldensville community to hold church on Paper Mill Island on Sunday mornings starting at 8:00 AM, is that what you said? From June 16th through September 1st.
Motion.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, any other items before we do our usual?
Let's prolong this as long as possible.
Can I get a motion to pay bills of audit?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:07?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You are relieved.
For a church.
You are relieved.